Mr. Chairman?
We're good? Okay, we're back. Okay, item five, confirm future meeting dates. Our next meetings are scheduled for February 25th and 26th prior to special town meeting, and those meeting locations will be at Milton High School.
Six thirty, I believe, right?
Correct? Six thirty, yeah. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Item six, approval of meeting minutes. Do we have any meetings minutes here? Oh, let me click on them. I click on my box. So we have meeting minutes from January 23rd. Is it just those, Jen? Just the 23rd?
February 1st.
The February 1st.
I move to approve the meeting minutes from January 23rd, 2019.
Second.
And February 1st as well?
That one I'm gonna abstain from because I wasn't.
Okay, I move to approve.
You need to vote on the 23rd.
Oh, yeah, okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? I was trying to put it together, but it's okay. Alright, no worries. Okay, can I have a motion on February 1st?
2019. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You're abstaining, or one abstention, I get that? Okay.
Two abstentions.
Two abstentions, oh, okay, okay. Sorry, I apologize, Tony. Let's get back to my... Okay. Item seven, is anyone here for Citizen Speak? None, moving right along. I'm gonna jump item eight, I'm gonna go right to item... I'll come back to item eight. I'm gonna jump to item 11. We have a discussion approval to discuss the application process for Chapter 140, Section 58, Class II DL license. For the record, I'll take part in this only because this is a process we have to start for the town, but when we get to the actual, at some point when he, this applicant does apply, I'll accuse myself only because I'm a member of my family, it's the landlord, not the business, it's the landlord of the property. So, but just for history, and after talking to Jen and Christine yesterday, there have been these licenses in the past within the town, but it's been many years, and as Christine Stanton pointed out, the statutes changed quite a bit since the last time we issued one, so we need to move the process forward so we can have it in place, so with that. The town has received an application for a Class II DL license from Robb Boumazad, DBA Milton Auto, Milton Auto Repair, correct, at 944 Cantina, Milton. The Board of Appeals has already granted him a variance on the nature of a special permit for the license. Town Council's provided their opinion, which, does everyone have it, have that already? Okay, has provided their opinion on the procedure for a Class II license issued by the Select Board under Chapter 140, Section 59. And we have a motion here before us. Do we wanna make a motion and then get in discussion, or... We good with that?
If I might, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
So there was a lot of researching that was done with respect to this. Great work by Jen and Christine, and Town Council weighed in. Obviously, everybody understands what Town Council is recommending with respect to the process that we set forth in place. We did also speak to Walter White, who did some work. Walter's a building inspector in town. Walter did a lot of this in Quincy during his time there, and he followed up with the Quincy inspector as to how their process fits. We also looked at neighboring communities that have process, processes in place, and trying to come up with the best practice to make it as easy to do, but also making sure that the town is covered and that, and that, because this, as you said, Mr. Chairman, these rules have changed significantly, and in fact, it changed at the beginning of this year, so it's, it's almost a moving target, so it's almost beneficial that we set that process in place now that we know that the landscape has changed. So, Town Council's done a lot of research on this, and has worked with Christine Stanton and Jen McCullar in the office, so I think enabling this board as the licensing agent to come up with that process, and then hold a public hearing, which is the next necessary step after this board agrees to the process, makes perfect sense, seeing as though...
This will become our process going forward for any future applications.
Correct.
As I said, there were, at least I know, 15, at least 15 years ago, there were two, one in East Milton and one at the gas station that was beside, what is the 711 on Randolph Ave now, years ago. And that's gotta be gone, at least 15 years, about 15 years since that building was torn down. So we have a motion before us to approve the application process required for a Class II DL license in the town of Milton. And that's all voting on 10 is to stop this process. Does anyone wanna make that motion?
Set out what it is? The motion.
So the motion is going to set out the procedure for a Class II license under Chapter 140, Section 59. I believe that's what John wrote in his... Click on this here. His opinion.
Yep, I mean, doesn't, don't we have to set it out in the motion? Or at least refer to John's memo?
I was just gonna say to you, I was, I said we refer to John's memo. You comfortable with that?
Yes.
So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say that the motion, then, would be to approve the application process as articulated, the correspondence from Town Council John Flynn, dated February 1st, 2019, relative to Class II license. Is that okay? Okay, second. Any other discussion? You good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very good. Okay, oh, damn, what did I do that for?
Quick and easy.
Okay, okay, okay. Just gonna work right up backwards, going back to 10. 10 is a ratification vote to ratify $2,000 expenditure for Wiki Maps, the traffic, for the Traffic Mitigation Committee. Where's yours, Mr. Zulis?
So the Traffic Mitigation Committee, one of the, one of the prime efforts, yeah, undertaken by the Traffic Mitigation is to get community input. Part of that is gonna be through public meetings, the first of which is scheduled for February 28th, the second of which is to get feedback online through this Wiki Maps pack, or software, I guess, for lack of a better term, and the Traffic Mitigations Committee unanimously supports this expenditure, which will help the Traffic Mitigation Committee collect data and input from the residents, so we can address the problems and try to come up with potential solutions for the problem. So Traffic Mitigation Committee is much in favor of this, and I am as well.
Just one question, where are we getting this from?
Howard Stein Hudson ran the Complete Streets Wiki Map through the Planner's Office and Lauren Masier. That, that would be a phone conversation tomorrow after our Traffic Mitigation Committee. The idea is to get this Wiki Map online by this time next week, if not, you know, maybe the 14th or 15th, in advance of the public information session, so that there is some information collected prior to that, that meeting, for any of those that choose not to attend, or, you know, feel free to attend, obviously, we're, all of the public are welcome, but the idea is to get this Wiki Map up online as soon as possible.
Wanna make a motion? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Didn't you ask where the money was coming from?
Selectman's budget.
Thank you.
Correct.
That's what I thought you were gonna, okay, thanks.
So I'll move to ratify a $2,000 expenditure for Wiki Map for the Traffic Mitigation Committee efforts to collect data from residents.
Second.
Discussion? All those, talk, discussion up.
I'm good.
Chair, when that Wiki Map will be made available publicly as soon as possible, and we will notify people through social media and on town's website.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, item nine, discussion on the FY 2020 budget.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Relative, relatively quickly, we're still very preliminary. We received some good news from the Governor's Budget, which was submitted two weeks ago, which added almost an additional $660,000 net of the assessments. At this point in time, we are 2% unbalanced. We have begun conversations with all department heads, both town and school side, regarding reductions to their first submission of a budget. It's a normal procedure that we go through. We did receive some good news from the Chief Assessor, who increased his growth number about $140,000. We plugged that number in yesterday. Our friends at the Blue Hills Regional Technical High School informed the Warren Committee Monday night that due to a reduction in enrollment this year, there are 11 less students. Actually, they take last year's numbers to, to make this year's assessment. 11 less students at, less Milton students in Blue Hills Regional Technical High School netted out to almost $140,000 in savings. We were carrying approximately $100,000 increase on that due to the first year of the operating expenses for the capital repairs that town meeting approved. So that's also a good story, but again, at this time, conservatively, we're almost 2% unbalanced.
Which equates to?
$2.2 million. General fund expenditures of approximately $112 million at this time. And again, the first round of reduction talks with each of the department heads went well. We'll revisit that this, this coming week, and everyone will be sharpening their pencil.
And I know you've had at least one, if not two, meetings in the schools as well?
Correct. Dr. Craighead, Mr. Donahue couldn't be there. Dr. Craighead, Dr. Pavlicek, Superintendent Gormly, and the school committee is aware of the reduction ask due to this unbalance.
Mike, when you say that those discussions went well, could you elaborate? What do you mean by that?
So, we're, yeah, we're not talking cuts. We, we, we went to everyone with this shortfall. If you're to take 35% of the cuts from the town side and 65% from the school side, is a normal algorithm that we've used in the past, and asked each of the town departments to take a look at where they could reduce that original submission. And a reduction's a lot different than, than a cut, right? We're not talking about taking last year's numbers and removing stuff from that, but rather taking this year's first pass at their budget submission to the Warren Committee and this, and this board, and reducing some of that number. There were some asks, you know, the Fire Department has asked for some equipment and some training, you know, the Libraries has, has talked about their scheduling and what may or may not need to take place over there, and each department came up with a percentage of reductions while still within their ask.
And I just, just to emphasize that point, I think that's an important point. We're not talking about cuts or reductions to last year's budget or to a budget, we're talking about lessening the increased, increased requests from the, from the departments. Is that fair to say?
Correct, yep.
So far, right, right now, right, so far. But that's still, this is the beginning of year three, post a, what, $3.5 million? What was the overall, 3.5?
3.296.
3.29, so that's, it's almost two-thirds of it. Three years in, which is significant. And next year's not gonna get easier.
Yeah, all signs, both at the state level and some of the...
I was actually impressed with the Governor's numbers, rather, they were higher than I thought. I, I don't think they wanna be that. I thought last year, being an election year, kinda got like...
Yeah, we were pleasantly surprised and thankful for the unrestricted local aid and the Chapter 70 money that came in, and that Chapter 70 regional money also netted out to the positive we saw from, there was a percentage of the piece that we got from Blue Hills Regional Technical High School the other night. Again, it's, everyone's rowing in the same direction, we're all trying to reduce where we can and, and balance, understanding that there are some projects coming online, probably next year, with the Polte Project and the Hendry's Project, they seem to be excavating well down there, where those projects should get up online and start to see some of the benefits of that to the town.
Any other comment, anybody else?
Finance committee's meeting's gonna be Friday, so we've been discussing this, but getting reports from the town administrator.
$2 million's a lot, though, I just...
And again, again, some, some of that 2.2 million has to do with the, with the useful life of the equipment that we saw, and there's some work to be done to mitigate that in the next couple of years, but there is an impact on the FY 20 budget for the debt service included in the current year's payment, so that a portion of that unbalance is due to that financing.
Okay.
But we should also, this isn't unusual, we've been in this spot in many years.
Oh, I, I said, I...
Closing a gap like this.
We have House Two and the Senate budget coming, you know, it, they come somewhat slowly, but usually there are improvements to what the Governor submits to the budget, so we'll take everything we can get.
Okay, thank you. Item eight, which is discussion, we got on that, we got in, we, we all got on that for now, moving on, okay. Item eight, which is discussion approval on the Youth Task Force to appoint the Park Commissioner. And this is a motion to appoint the Park Commissioner to the Youth Task Force. Go ahead, it's your baby. He'll let you open it up.
Well, yeah, so I'll, this is really a request that resulted from Sarah Callahan, who's the Chair of the Youth Task Force. She made a presentation, I think, in early December, November, early December. She, at that time, I think, reported to us that the committee was unanimously in favor of this, thinks that having the Park Commissioner involved provides the policy perspective that we're not getting it, that we weren't getting, and in fact, the Park Commissioner has been attending the meetings, every meeting that I've been to since that time, since I've been involved, and, you know, at least, my opinion, has been adding value. So the Youth Task Force is in favor of it. I'm in favor, I think it's a good add, I think it adds value, and that's the basis for the motion.
Second?
Oh, so I'll move to appoint a Park Commissioner to the Youth Task Force.
I thought that was a motion.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Discussion? So I only have one in, Michael, so my main concern on this is that this is something that personally I was a proponent of for a long time, going back to Steve Paxia, who's really been the guy behind this whole, Steve was the first to never bring it to me probably three years ago, and my only concern, and I've articulated this to Michael, is that we have four working members of the town that, to me, I call our go-to people, and as you know, that each of them has come to us either collectively or individually and feel that they're not being listened to. And my main concern in this is, these are the people who roll up their sleeves and go out and they make a difference in our kids' lives in each and every day, and that's the only thing that I'm gonna relay in to you on this, and I've related to you, and I'm just, I'm making, I'm making it public now, and that concerns me, because as I say, you have to have faith in the people, for all of us who sit in this room tonight, we're only as good as the people who are out there doing the job in this building, in the Fire Building, the Library, the COA, everywhere, and these are people who, to me, are rock stars. Maria, Chris, Magna has come and met with me, we've met with Paul D'Amano twice. I just ask of you that you would truly weigh, relay to the Commissioner of that, or the Chair of that committee, just how valuable those people are to her. And you know this, I've said this to you personally, I'm gonna vote in favor of it, but I, I am concerned about that, it strongly concerns me. These people do a lot of, a lot of greatness in this town for their young people, and you have to look no further than the I-Team report on Channel 5 tonight by Kathy Curran on just the opioid, and how it's all around us, everywhere, and that, you know, I look at the relationship they have with Mass Pack, was amazing, I wanna see them have the same thing, and I wanna see the same value to what they bring to this town each and every day on this committee as it is in every other committee, so, given that, all those in favor, anything else?
Yeah, I just, I can just say that, you know, that certainly hasn't been an experience that has, that has shown up in any of the meetings. You know, everyone has input, there's a lot of back and forth, there's a lot of discussion, no one is certainly shut off, everyone's opinion is considered, so I don't know what the basis of it is, I don't know who it is, but, you know, I can tell you from my observation, all of the opinions are considered, there haven't been any decisions that have been made, I don't think, since I've been there, that have been unanimous. So, so I think the opinions are, are considered, but I will definitely relay that, that, because you're right, those, those opinions are important, they're critical, and I definitely will relay that, because if that's a feeling, then, then that's something we need to make sure doesn't continue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anything, I'm sorry, Tony.
Well, I just had a couple of questions. I don't have a problem with this at all, but more broadly, related to the Youth Task Force, now that we've identified and we've set in motion, I, you know, this discussion tonight with the, with the church, what is, broadly speaking, the charge of the Youth Task Force down the road?
Right, so it's, it's...
Are we still...
Yeah, it's the same charge that we gave them, and it's, and it's a charge that encompasses more than just having a, what is kind of a short-term avenue for the 2:30 to 6 issue, right? Because I think, I think it's fair to say that the consensus of the committee is that there's not just one problem here, it's not, one issue, rather, or one challenge. There is a broad challenge that encompasses both middle school children and high school children, and both after-school and nighttime, Friday night, Saturday night. So, so this helps address initial, an initial issue and initial challenge, and that is primarily the pressure that, that we've been seeing at the library of a lot of the middle school students.
It's a wonderful, low-cost, no-cost, short-term solution.
Right, exactly, and so I think...
Best you're gonna get here in the next five years, money-wise, it's got the best thing for your doll you're gonna get.
So I think the committee is thinking long-term, beyond this, will be thinking long-term, and it has been going out on site visits to various communities, seeing what they do. Natick and Brookline and Randolph and other communities have been, have been making site visits to actual youth centers, and, and I think the committee, if we can, if we've met that short-term challenge, the committee will now be looking more broadly long-term, how to address, how to address the issue long-term and how to address some of those other issues, you know? For example, nighttime.
Okay.
You know, nighttime issue.
And the Parks Commissioner now that attends all of these meetings, does, does making him officially a part of this task force now allow him to deliberate?
To vote, yes, exactly.
To vote, okay, whereas now he can't.
Yeah, I mean, he was adding value, just adding comments and, and participating, but just not voting.
So what's changed since we, as a board, formed this committee, and now that you feel the necessity to add a Parks Commissioner to it?
It's, it's a, it's a, to have that policy perspective has been beneficial, kind of the overview of what Parks is trying to do, what kind of programs Parks is providing, and what, what, what programs they may provide in the future. So, you know, to have that, that input from a programming, an overall programming perspective, and from a policy, from an elected official's perspective, I think is beneficial and will be beneficial going forward.
I still have concerns, but I'm gonna vote for it. All those in favor?
Aye.
You're good? Aye. Okay. Item 12. This is discussion approved, a state-grant outdoor hockey infrastructure location, this is a... You wanna talk to, I just, I'm not sure what it came...
Sure, yeah.
I know what it is and where it's proposed, I'm not sure where the money came from.
Sure, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Senator Timmeltie secured $30,000 in a grant specifically for street hockey infrastructure. There was some dialogue with myself and Chair Regina Malley about a permanent place for that. I think time is not on our side for that, we're, we're looking at advertising a contract for this sooner rather than later, and there was some discussion, albeit, we haven't spoke to the neighborhood group yet, but there was a suggestion by the Parks Commissioners when they met a week ago Friday, that a temporary location for that might, might better serve itself for the upcoming season, and they were talking about the parcel just out back at Town Hall here, specifically where the basketball court currently sits at Clap Engine in Walnut Street. There is some stuff to work through, I have Alan Bishop taking a look at the specifics of that piece of asphalt to see if this equipment would fit on that footprint, and then obviously there'll be some public comment as we work through with the neighborhood, something we, the Parks Commissioners were thinking about possibly installing it sometime in April and removing it in June, with the thought that, you know, it's a little bit too hot in the summertime for this to...
Street hockey.
Yeah, but the idea is to find a permanent home for it somewhere on one of the park assets, it's just, we, they haven't been able to identify a permanent location for it, so rather than let this equipment not get used this spring, find a temporary location for it and try to make it fit short-term at that location.
So this would need our approval because we have jurisdiction on that basketball court?
You have jurisdiction on that parcel, correct. Again, a little bit ahead of ourselves because there hasn't been any communication with the neighborhood or anything like that.
No one, right.
But figured just talk to this board first, start get the ball rolling, because that RFP's gonna go out soon, and a lot of that has to do with where you think you're gonna put the piece of equipment.
And the RFP is to buy it.
To buy it, correct. The town would own that, and then ultimately affix it in a, in a permanent place, somewhere centrally located.
So my next question is... Do you want to set up a neighborhood meeting?
Sure, with, I figured I'd bring it to this board first, that, that's, that's the location that the Parks Commissioners had deemed at their meeting about 10 days ago.
So it's three months, I'm sorry, go ahead, Melinda. Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Well, I guess I just have questions about, I understand it's very popular, which is great, but what is...
Street hockey, you mean, street hockey?
Yeah, our street hockey in particular. So what, do, will we be able to go to a community meeting and give people estimates about, like, well, what does it look like traffic-wise, and where would the parking be? If we could get some of those questions answered ahead of time, so that we could, like, have a proposal for, this is what it would look like, this is how it's managed, does that make sense?
It does, and there's a follow-up, Monday at 3:30, I'm gonna sit with the Parks Commissioners in this room to qualify a lot of that stuff.
So that we can answer those questions to the neighbors?
Yeah, I thought, but just because jurisdiction lies with this board, it, it made sense to me to bring it to this board first and start the discussion.
To Melinda's point, just from a parking perspective, most of the use would be when Town Hall and, say, the council and agency are closed, so we would have, like, our own lots available, like the Town Hall lot and the, and the COA lot.
The slot empties out.
Completely, I know it does, yeah. I just wanna be able, 'cause we're gonna have to answer the questions, I just wanna make sure we can answer them all.
Question regarding the diagram, it says eight-foot panels all around it, are we talking eight-foot fences and walls?
Oxiglass.
Yeah, they, well, it's the boards itself, and then the idea is to install, they install higher fences on the end pieces, and if you, if you look at the rink as such, anywhere but where the benches would be, which is in the middle, just balls tend to fly, obviously, at the far end, I think we all saw the picture of the deck when it froze over during the ice storm, and people's suggestion that we make that a hockey rink, I, I couldn't imagine how many pucks would fly onto Granite Avenue and Bryant Ave.
It got brought up during ULI.
Right.
Not the hockey park, just a skating, like, from the common, a skating rink there.
But that's the idea, Katie, that there would, there may be an added cost to reinforce that with fence. There was some talk about a permanent location in a piece of newly repaved Kelly parking lot, but that's a further discussion for the Parks Commissioners.
Yeah, I guess I feel a little better, a little bit better about this, knowing that we're only talking temporary for a couple of months, because permanently, I don't think that's the right location.
No, I don't either, but you know something?
Nor do the Parks Commissioners.
To the neighbors' credit, it's something different that brings life to that, maybe we see it, gives us an idea, other than, it's passive right now, pretty much, I mean, other than once-in-awhile basketball game, we'll see the good in the bad.
I guess it's gonna generate a lot of noise, though, and there's a lot of houses right around that parcel.
Yeah, I don't think the idea is to install lighting and keep it out at night, and I mean, it's, it's, it's a daylight activity.
So this is something that would be installed for, in April and removed by June?
Take it down.
And we're looking for a permanent home elsewhere for it?
Correct, yeah, and the Kelly Field parking lot was, one of the Parks Commissioners had configured it in such a way that you're not taking up much of the parking down here, you're not, there's not much of an impact onto Brook Road, and Babe Ruth plays down there, and anyone that's seen a Babe Ruth game knows that those baseballs either end up on Brook Road or across Brook Road, more often than not the foul ball, so the idea was to, to make it parallel with, with Brook Road, but all this stuff is, is still in concept.
Yeah, I wonder if any of the schools might be a possible location also, maybe the high school, if there's any vacant space up at the school.
Yeah.
I don't know, though, but I don't...
I mean, if this were a permanent proposal, I'd wanna run this by the Master Plan Committee as well as by the abutters, but.
Yeah.
I still think we wanna run it by the abutters. I think we wanna do that.
Myself and the chair, last April, walked Yulin Rink and talked about possibly using that parking lot.
That was my first thought, was Yulin Parking Lot.
Yeah. Yulin vacates April 1st, that rink closes on April 1st, and that parking lot is non-existent, again, until the rink opens on Labor Day. But, you know, at the time, we didn't give it too much thought, but we did walk the site. It might be, it's not as centrally located as Kelly Field or Town Center would be, but it's a bit tough to get to if you're not being dropped off or if you're on foot.
And the, yeah, it's a long way to make a call, to go, like, at least here, we can have the public bathrooms here open, and I'll just, would have to be sure the rink was open, but it is, from a space perspective, it works, it definitely works, but.
Again, understanding with the Town Center, all the stuff going on here, we would be remiss if we didn't invite the group in and.
Hear them out.
Yeah, most definitely, yeah.
Agreed. Go ahead.
And so is the idea we're doing this on a temporary basis because we're not sure where we want it to go on a permanent basis, is that the idea? That's the way I understand it from the Parks Commissioners, yeah. We had a brief dialogue about a permanent location for it. The idea is not to pack it up and put it away and, you know, now you have to get a trailer and you have to find a place to put it. A permanent location for this, Waymouth has a great location, Canton has a great one on Picunit Street, Quincy's got one. They're used year-round, less frequently during the high humidity and high heat, but they are used year-round. So a permanent location, centrally located somewhere in town on a Parks parcel.
So we don't think ultimately this will be the permanent location?
No, 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 no.
He hasn't said that wrong, no, this read it step.
Okay.
Yeah, and I know we're talking about abutters, but just thinking about the newly-formed Neighborhood Association, we might, I don't know how far down that goes. I think they're gonna wanna be just notified, at least if not.
Oh, yeah, I agree.
Yeah. Yeah, and the, I mean, the RFP is going out soon from Eileen Zuniga's office, and it's gonna take a little while to get the stuff, and, you know, before you know it's gonna be April. It'd be a shame if we had the material and didn't have a home for it, even temporarily.
Well, just to put things in perspective, too, I mean, the street hockey program as it's run now is run up at the Cunningham Park and the tennis courts. So that parking lot can accommodate all of those cars, no problem. I mean, these games are 40 minutes tops, and these kids are in and out, and the whole thing is like two, two-and-a-half hours. And frankly, if that parking lot, Cunningham Park, can handle it, I feel that this can handle it no problem. And I also feel that, like, the abutters on Clapp Street, all things being equal, very, very minimal. I mean, you're talking six to 10 houses total in that parcel on that stretch of Clapp Street that, you know, is across the street. Now, you're talking about something different with Magnolia and Fairbanks and so on and so forth, but I wouldn't see it being as intrusive as potentially you might think. And the whole thing start to finish, it's not more than two-and-a-half hours, I think, and it's one night a week.
Well, to Katie's point, though, I don't know how noisy it is, so.
Well, it's a bunch of kids playing hockey, it's, you know.
It's not gonna be as noisy as a band concert on the front gazebo, yeah, that's for sure. But let's, I mean, we'll vet it out, and we'll, you know, we'll just.
Yeah, and Cunningham was a thought, but that's not property that the town owns.
Right.
And they've been very benevolent with the use of that on Friday nights up there. And, you know, there's well over 200 kids that utilize that program that Jamie Heggie and Pat Goonan and John Shea.
And Shea.
Yeah, put together, literally from grassroots.
Richard and Mike, other than the sort of geographic inconvenience, if you will, of the parking lot at Yulin, was there anything else that took away from that as a potential location?
Just the kids that would have to get there by foot, that's, it's not great crossing Canton Avenue.
No, 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 it's not. I didn't know if, but if there was anything else.
And it's remote, and the rink's not open, so the bathrooms wouldn't be accessible.
There's no sidewalk to walk in there.
Yeah.
But from a space perspective.
Yeah, it's ideal.
I mean, that was an ideal parking lot, park-wise and set-it-up-wise, but it had nothing, it doesn't really have anything to go with it.
So the RFP is something the Park Commissioners are putting out?
Eileen's doing it for them, yeah. They accepted the grant from the Senate, from the State House.
So the RFP is to identify a provider of these rinks?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, who you're gonna buy, what mall, you know, what brand, what you're gonna buy. We good? So do we need to, hold on.
Yeah, do we need to actually approve this location at this moment?
I think the discussion is great for tonight. I think, you know, I need to set up a public meeting with the Neighborhood Association, whether we do it over at the Council on Aging informally, I can do it during the day or at night with them and just let them know what we're talking about. I'll know more on Monday after I meet with the Parks Commissioners. It would help to have one of them there as well to let this neighborhood group understand what the long-term goal is for this equipment.
I would do it at night, just so more people can be available.
Do you need to vote it, do we need to vote it? Do we need to vote to approve the grant tonight?
The grant, no. The grant's been accepted. I think the motion was there just for this board to approve potentially using that land, which is under your jurisdiction, contingent upon, you know, the Neighborhood Association and Parks Commissioners qualifying.
I mean, the one benefit is, going back to Mr. Zulis's concerns just from youth activities, is that it's offering another alternative for neighborhood kids? And that's just a, maybe that's a win-win for the town? Okay, so, we're good then, so no vote on this, we're just, you'll get back.
I'll update the board.
Okay, update us, okay. Okay, item 13, discussion approval, 2019 pilot payment in lieu of taxes letters, which I believe this was drafted by you, Mr. Perry, correct? Is this, is this the committee, the committee?
Yeah, it was drafted by the committee. It was drafted by the committee, and the letters have been circulated. My guess is that everyone has had a chance to read them. I'm more than happy to take questions on them. We, this year, we did things slightly different in that we customized each letter for each recipient. Fundamentally, the letters are the same, they're asking for the same thing. We did not deviate from the policy. The calculation and the procedure that we have in place for working up the value and the amount of money that we are requesting is identical to last year, but again, we customized the letters so that they're better tailored, if you will, to each recipient, Curry College, Milton Academy, and BID Milton. I'm more than happy to take any questions that you might have regarding these letters. It is an ongoing negotiation. I've been in touch with Milton Hospital as recently as this week. I'm in the process of setting a meeting, ideally with another member of the Pilot Committee, whether it's Town Administrator or one of the other members, to sit down again with Milton Academy, their head of school and their CFO. And one approach that we're taking this year as well is to try to incorporate the Board of Directors of Milton Academy into the decision-making process and at least notifying them directly in the form of a letter that we are seeking these payments, and we're doing the same thing with BID Milton and their Board of Trustees, excuse me, it's the Board of Trustees for Milton Academy and the Board of Directors for the hospital. So there's 19 board, there's 19 members of the Board of Directors on the hospital, there's 32 members of the Board of Trustees for Milton Academy, and we're sending them each individually letters that we're also sending to the CEO of BID Milton, Rich Fernandez, head of school, Todd Bland, and also the president of Curry College, Ken Quigley. For all intents and purposes, you know, given the fact that Curry has made a donation this year, it's not where we would like to see it, but it is certainly a step in the right direction, and as compared to his two peers within those three nonprofits, Curry College is definitely leading the charge. So our focus in the short term has been on Milton Academy and BID Milton. And part of our research, we've discovered that there is a pilot agreement in place with BID Needham and the Town of Needham. They've entered into a three-year formal agreement that's been signed between both parties. And also, as you were well aware, both Michael, as a citizens' member last year and Richard on the board, you know, it's well-known that there's an agreement in place between Phillips Andover and the Town of Andover, but there's also just recently, as of last July, there's an agreement between the Town of Braintree and Thayer Academy. Thayer Academy entered into an agreement with the Town of Braintree, again, a formalized three-year agreement for some total of $100,000 where they.
Each year?
Each year, in the form of a cash payment, not an in-kind contribution, but a cash payment totaling between $33,000 and $34,000, but Thayer's remitting to the Town of Braintree, which I thought was wonderful. And that's a school that is, financially speaking, not nearly as strong as Milton Academy is in terms of its endowment, in terms of, I'm guessing, its revenue.
Or its size, or its demand on resources.
So I put some figures together that were not included in those letters, but it just puts things in perspective as it relates specifically to this pilot agreement that Thayer entered into with Braintree, and I think it helps paint a picture, if you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. So just for comparison's sake, I mean, Milton Academy has, yeah, their geographic acreage here in the Town of Milton is 125 acres, and Thayer takes up 34 acres. Milton Academy's endowment is $310 million. Thayer's endowment, I was, that figure is less precise. I ballparked it at 35 to 40 million, Jen came up with a figure of 43 million. But let's say it's between 35, and I'll even go to 50 million. Thayer pays property taxes of $60,000 annually. Up until last Thursday, the expectation was Milton Academy was paying property taxes of roughly $125,000, which they will do for the foreseeable future, but we received a letter dated February 1st that they're filing for an abatement to remove those taxes or.
From 14 properties, correct?
I don't know the number of properties, but.
14.
14 properties, the remaining 14 properties.
We're not sure whether, where that abatement process will go, time will tell, but they have filed that paperwork to remove that from our tax rules. Tuition, you know, roughly the same between the two schools. The pilot figure, the pilot contribution, rather, is the one that really jumps out at me. $0 from Milton Academy, and again, $33,000, $34,000 annually from Thayer. And this really got my attention, frankly, doing this research, because I feel that Milton Academy is in a position financially and economically where they can make the contribution that we're asking them to make. We're simply asking them for some help and for some cooperation. As we all know, I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, I mean, we live in a town where 23% of the landmass is owned by.
Reservation, right.
The state of Massachusetts. The DCR, right? We don't have a huge commercial tax base, particularly in comparison to the Town of Braintree. Our need is far more urgent than the Town of Braintree, and we have a preparatory school that I think is economically much better positioned to make a pilot payment, but when you compare it to Thayer and the Town of Braintree, you have a town where the need for pilot payment is far less urgent, and I would argue the financial strength of that school is not nearly as strong as Milton Academy, and they are making a payment. So I, you know, I'm gonna, we as a committee are gonna continue to keep at it and have these negotiations, I would, to the extent that I'm able, that we are able to do so as a committee to incorporate some of the Board of Trustees in those discussions, in those negotiations, if at all possible, and see where we get. But, you know, I think that the urgency of this is really, really particularly strong, especially when you layer in and you factor in the fact that we, you know, there's 35 kids that are, you know, faculty children that attend Milton Public Schools. And a conservative estimate by my math, if you take $14,200 the per pupil cost to educate times those 34 kids, you come up with a figure of 497, roughly half a million dollars.
694 for this year.
Correct, correct. And now, there's some gray area there, Richard, but I get it, that figure was tossed around, so I estimate it conservatively at 497. We also pick up the trash of all the.
Non-taxable.
The faculty homes.
Faculty homes, correct.
On Milton Academy property. It's my hope and expectation that those homes pay the $4 pay-as-you-throw charge, and they probably do, but we, we're, that's a.
It's only three, don't scare people.
It's a municipal service. It's a municipal service that we're providing.
Plus free recycling.
And I don't feel like we're getting any, much in the way of return for that, in the form of a cash payment. Certainly, there are the in-kind contributions. Milton Academy has provided us with a list of some of the improvements, capital improvements that they've made to the town over the years, and that certainly counts for something, but it's not nearly close to what we're looking for. And, you know, I'm disappointed by it, I really am, I truly am, and I feel that the school wants to do the right thing, I believe that, and hopefully we can get that message across with some of the members of the board.
Can I ask two questions relative to Thayer?
Sure.
Because I don't think they have any, do they have any faculty housing on their property?
They do.
Do they have any students in the Braintree Public Schools?
I don't know the answer to that question. My, I don't know.
Okay. Do they have any properties that are currently on the tax rule like these houses are at Milton Academy?
Yes.
And so they pay the taxes on.
$60,000.
Plus the $100,000 contribution to it.
That's right, correct. So Thayer has not taken steps to remove any of their faculty housing from the town tax rules. Whether or not they think that they are able to, like, I don't know, that's really, you know, a gray area that I, you know, questions, those are questions I can't answer, as to the viability of why or why not they're on the.
You feel that that most recent letter is more of like a quid pro quo, all right, you, you know, we'll give you this, if you, it's really negates to a zero in the end?
How so? I'm not sure I understand the question.
So you take the houses, so we'll give you, we'll potentially give you a $100,000 pilot payment, but we're gonna take these.
Oh, there's no question. It's just, you're taking money and you're moving it from one column to another.
So there's a net gain to the community of nothing?
Exactly, exactly. Now, it did occur to me that perhaps Milton Academy is thinking of making a pilot payment, which would be wonderful, and in the efforts of clearing things up and removing some of this gray area as to what is a contribution to the town, can we, technically speaking, file an abatement and have these homes removed from the tax rules? Maybe they just want a clear slate? Now, if that were in fact the case, that pilot payment would need, you'd need to contribute 125 just to get back to zero, so it would be in excess of that, really. That's how I see it. But yeah, you're right, it's just moving money from one column to another, as I see it.
You're loaded for bear over there, or you're just sitting there being quiet, you just, any comments? Actually, how about the hospital, do you wanna go on further with the hospital?
Well, I, you know, I will say that in the letter this year, we did acknowledge the fact that the hospital does pay taxes on the Lince Medical Office building suites to the tune of $193,000 annually. Again, whether or not.
Because it's a far-profit, it is a far-profit building, it's not a nonprofit.
Right, so that, that's come up before in discussion, and it's a matter of interpretation. There's the one argument that, well, you're paying taxes on that because you're required to do so. The hospital takes the argument that perhaps they could remove that medical office building as a non-tax exempt and put it in the tax exempt category, and that they're simply, you know, allowing it to maintain as a status quo and so on and so forth, and that should be seen as a contribution to the town. But again, the counterargument to that is, hey, it's not tax exempt, you need to pay taxes for it. But I did wanna acknowledge that, that they do, technically speaking, standing alone, pay taxes to the Town of Milton for $193,000, and that's something they're required to do, and they do in fact do that.
But the remainder of the campus and the main facility and.
Right, does not, no, no. And their, I think that their agreement, or, pardon me, the value that we've attached is 206. 245, 609. And if you take Curry as an example, I mean, their pilot payment as an ideal, and I understand, you know, we're, we live in the practical reality, we don't live in ideals. Ideally, we would like to see these payments remitted in full for whatever the balance is that we've worked up, I understand that, but, you know, we live in a practical world, and we, you know, I'm well aware that sometimes that that's not a practical solution. You know, Curry is a 388. I think that that's their pilot notice, and they've contributed $100,000. So if you round up to 400,000, they're at 100, you know, they're remitting roughly 25% of what we would like to see their pilot payment be. And I think it would be a huge victory for this committee, for this year. And I think it would be a huge victory for this committee, for this year, if we could see those other nonprofits remit something in the neighborhood percentage-wise of what Curry is doing. Particularly seeing as I personally believe that one of those two nonprofits that has not yet contributed anything is in extraordinarily sound financial position to do so. Again, in comparison to some of its peer schools, most notably the one in Braintree, that I think is in a far less economically strong position and does make payments to the town of Braintree. So we have these letters drafted. Ideally, you know, I'd like the full support of each and every one of you here on the board, but, you know, with, you know, hopefully we can get a majority vote, we can send these letters out, we can continue these negotiations, and work towards trying to get a payment submitted to the town. You know, we're in an environment right now, as I see it, the core function of us as selectmen is the financial stewards of the town of Milton. Everything else we do, it's very, very important. But to some extent, that's window dressing. Our core function is to be the financial stewards of the town of Milton. And right now, we're in an environment where we're talking about trying to fund the construction of three new firehouses. We have a dialogue right now that has caught fire on this burgeoning elementary school enrollment. And we're talking about potentially new classrooms, potentially, I don't even dare articulate it and say it out loud, but potentially a new elementary school. If not now, when? I mean, it's all hands on deck here, and we have three nonprofits, one of which is contributing, two of which are not, and we're asking for help, and we're asking for cooperation. That's all we're asking for. So, you know, I don't know how much more sense of urgency we can bring to this, to this situation.
Anybody else?
Yes, so I, I think our prior discussion in December indicated we have some difference of opinion on how we might wanna proceed here. So I'm just gonna state my opinion, and Tony and I have talked, and I understand your arguments Tony has made. Tony, I'm glad to hear that you're having another round of discussions with the institutions. I think that's very, a very positive step. I think that's what we should be doing. I think we should be having a discussion. At this time, I am not in favor of sending letters to the institutions. I think the recent developments that you've mentioned warrant further discussion, and I think it's much better to have those in person rather than through a letter. So it's pilot payments are voluntary, it's all about relationship building, it's all about partnering. I was not in favor of sending the letters. Last year, I did it reluctantly. I thought that sending the letters was counterproductive. I still think it's counterproductive. I think it's better to have an ongoing dialogue with the institutions. So, so that's my position. I'm not in favor of sending the letters at this time.
Okay, okay. As I mentioned earlier, I think that there's, there's an ideal, okay, which is what is communicated in this letter, and then there's a practical reality of what a payment would actually reflect. I'm all for negotiation and continued discussion and continued dialogue, one hundred percent. I think, and I've mentioned this before, I think we can have it both ways. I think absent any formal communication, written communication from the board to these three institutions is a misstep. I think that that needs to be there, that needs to exist, and then we can continue to follow up with those discussions and those negotiations. And I've communicated that to all three of those nonprofits. So I, and I believe you can have it both ways. And I respect your position, Katie, I do. We've discussed it. I just don't understand even the fact that you've, you know, proactively addressed the fact that you were reluctant to do it last year. I just don't know what's changed between this year and last year, where last year you were willing to lend your name to it, and this year you're not.
Because I think they were counterproductive last year.
I see.
I think the tone, I think I tried to explain in December, I think it's really important that we approach these institutions with the right tone and the right tenor, and that we're all working towards the ultimate goal here of hopefully bringing in pilot payments.
Right.
But I think, I would, I would prefer the board, charge the town administrator, and you, Tony, as the chair of the pilot committee, to have the discussions rather than submitting a letter in writing with a notice that, you know, gives them the amount to be paid. I'd rather that, I'd rather proceed in a, in a way that I think is more likely to get a desired result, which is to engage in a conversation. I don't think there have been in-person meetings about the recent developments because they're fairly recent. So, so I think that's something, I think at this point, we're better off sitting down and talking to the institutions, both about the letter that we received on Friday about the abatement that you mentioned...
Yeah.
And about the Needham agreement.
So just to speak to that a little bit, I agree with you a hundred percent. And that discussion that I'm looking to have, it's not for lack of trying. I have tried. I've tried over the last two weeks. And that non-discussion, I'm not saying is a result of any lack of cooperation, specifically I'm referring to the hospital. I know that it takes time to get two people together, maybe more than two people, two, three, four people. I understand that. And it will happen. I spoke with someone today on the board, and it will happen. But I've made an earnest and an honest effort to address the agreement between Needham and BID Needham with some of the board members, and we just haven't had that opportunity to have that discussion yet. But I believe that it will happen. And I'm optimistic, I really am, with the hospital and with Milton Academy. Truly, I am. I think that fundamentally and philosophically, they wanna do the right thing. I don't, I think where we're missing and where our paths are diverging, I don't think that these two entities understand the urgency and the need of these contributions as we do, as a town. And it's incumbent upon me to get that message across, incumbent upon the committee to get the message across, our town administrator. Really, it's incumbent upon all of us, the board, the town, everyone, to get that message across, because it's all hands on deck here, and it'll... I don't know what else I can, I can add.
Well, I have to say, I, we received two rounds of letters, and I was pleased with the second round. I think it's closer to...
Second round.
Yeah, to what Katie was talking about. I, I think if you're, we intend to have it both ways. I'd like to see that reflected in the letter. We look forward to, you know, continuing to talk to you. I mean, but when I see something like balance due, and I, I was looking at the Thayer agreement and the Phillips Andover agreement and the Needham agree, BID Needham agreements, and wondering like, okay, how did they get to yes, and then they codified that? And it didn't seem like, and it could have been, but I just don't know quite exactly the process, the way we're going about it. And I'm not necessarily opposed to sending a letter, and actually, I think a lot, it's, I, I, I think that it's much improved the tenor, but, but if you intend to actually go in and try to create partnerships, I guess I would like to see that reflected as a board member. Because, yeah, we do have fiduciary responsibility to the town, but fiduciary responsibility doesn't mean just financial. It also means this building of partnerships and...
Well, fiduciary responsibility means just that, actually.
It's actually larger than that. If you, it's, it's both financial, but we also had, have stewardship of other kinds, and that also goes along with creating a good atmosphere in town that, over the long term, gets the best out of these relationships. So you were talking about fire stations and schools and things like that, and I think that it would be good to be able to have a relationship with these entities where, you know, perhaps that they, there would be an opportunity for them to help in this way because they would benefit so much from, especially something like fire stations. So I'm not opposed to sending letters. I was just saying, I, I like the idea of what you were saying, a letter and continue to work together, but just to reflect that.
I don't think the letter itself will do it. I think the letter is just another step.
Yeah, no, but that's what I'm saying. I think that they, they need to work together, that's all. And I do like the idea, sorry, of, of, you know, this coming from the two of you working as a team.
I think the way passports have handled this is to delegate this to the town administrator, and this is what, the objective, we'd like to collect some pilot monies. But in fact, that's how the agreement with Milton Academy about the houses that are currently in the tax rules was negotiated by a former town administrator. I think less public discussion is better to getting an outcome, to more public discussion. I think this should be handled through, through dialogue.
I thought that two years ago, but I don't anymore. Go ahead, Michael.
No, can you elaborate? I'm sorry.
I'll go last summer. I don't know, Michael.
So, so let me just, because I was involved in this for about a year, let me just address the tone and the process and the discussions. So the discussions have been going on since June, July of two thousand and seventeen, so about more than a year and a half at various times. So we've been having discussions, and I can tell you, having been involved directly in the discussions, that the town could not have been more accommodating, the town could not have been more courteous, the town could not have been more professional in its discussions. And I'm sure that's continued since last summer when I stopped being involved directly. I'm sure that's continued as Tony's been involved in the discussions. So that hasn't changed, and it's not going to change, I don't believe. And so if the only, if the, if the issue is, well, we think that this letter somehow connotes a negative tone, I guess, I don't really see that because we are saying, this is our policy, and this is what our policy provides, and this is the amount. That's basically what we're saying. And, and I guess I have a lot more respect for these institutions than to think that there's a particular way that we have to ask them, there's a particular way that we have to approach them, rather than just saying, here's the substance of it, let's have a discussion. What do you think? All right? I don't think, I, I don't think there's a particular tone or way. I would hope, and I'm sure that this is the case, that the institutions aren't not paying pilot simply because we sent them a letter saying what the amount was. And in fact, the letters, in one respect, last year, did work because one of the pilot, one of the institutions increased their amount. So apparently, the tone or the letter wasn't viewed negatively by Curry College because they increased their payment to a hundred thousand. So, so I guess I don't see any, there hasn't been any negative tone, any challenging tone. There hasn't been anything but a cooperative, accommodating, professional tone, at least to the extent that I've been involved in the discussions, certainly from the town. I don't see the letters as a negative in any way. I don't, basically, we're, basically, what we are is saying, here's the amount in our policy, and we're giving you every accommodation possible. We're giving you credit for everything, even we don't, even though we don't have an agreement. We sought accommodation time after time after time and negotiated against ourselves in order to try to get to a win-win with the institutions. But the answer, time after time after time, was no, at least with respect to two of them. So, so I think, you know, my view is, and I'm sure, I'm sure this is the case with Tony and the, and the committee, the tone from the town will continue to be accommodating and courteous and professional, and we hope it'll be the same on the other side. I don't view these letters as anything other than professional and accommodating and courteous. And I don't think the institutions, as I said before, would not pay pilot because we asked in a particular way, and I think the letters worked. So I'm very much in favor of sending them again and helping the committee, which has worked very hard, helping the committee in its work.
So I'm gonna be a little more terse, not as nice as you have been. First, I, I hear you, Katie, and I respect your thoughts, and last year, I almost voted with you two to one against David after your committee came in to do that. And to President Quigley's point, he's a dear friend of mine, and I see no better partner that we have in government here for a private public partnership than we do at Curry College. But we talk about partnerships. To me, coming from thirty-two years in operations here, this town, from a governmental aspect, from an operational philosophy, echoes partnership in every single aspect, be it the police, the fire, the libraries, the council on aging, the schools, the DPW, every single element. So we're sitting here tonight with a two-point-two billion dollar deficit. That means that the police chief, the fire chief, the libraries, the council, every one of them is sitting there with a red pen, going like this. I doubt that the head of school at Milton Academy is doing that, and I doubt that the president of Curry, the president of Milton Hospital is doing that. Yet each of them draws significant resources on our town resources. And I can also attest to you tonight that probably at Forty Highland Street or right next to the fire headquarters, either deputy chief or lieutenant is sitting, wondering, do I have enough money tonight to fund a full shift because of the budget restrictions that exist on our resources that provide an umbrella of all government resources and protection to everyone who lives here regardless? I am deeply bonded by the information that Tony found from the town of Needham. And I actually drove out last week to see BID Needham, which is nowhere near the size or the footprint that BID Milton is. And I, while I value them, I mean, I think it's a great thing that we have them as partners in this community, but I think we have to send these letters. We've been, I've been sitting in this room, listening to this kid for two years, and the only thing that did change is kind of what President Quigley's stepping up to the plate. And why should he do it? And I feel as much that I should advocate for him as much as anybody else this time because why should he do it if the other two don't? Because we all live in a world where fairness has to come into play here somewhere. Fairness to him, but fairness to everyone who lives here. I did not know a year ago that there was a half a million dollars in taxpayer dollars being spent educating faculty students from Milton Academy and Milton Public Schools. I had no knowledge of that. That never came up when we were there last year. We did not know that. But I think we have to do this. To Tony's point, we are the chief stewards. We are the protectors of every single person who lives here, and every person who lives here and every person who works here deserves to be fought for just as much for us. And I really think we have to send those letters. I agree with everything that everyone else said. I think that I wanna see it positive, but sometimes in leadership, you have to have a carrot and a stick. Always lead with a carrot, but sometimes you have to have that stick. And I, I'm not proposing that, but I'm tired of sitting here after standing on a street corner, I don't know how many times I've done this in my life, going back to when I was a patrolman, in overrides, holding signs, begging taxpayers in this town to help pay more taxes, which we just did about two years ago, for three-point-two million dollars, and where are we gonna be here from now? Nine hundred thousand dollars would eradicate today one-half of our deficit. One-half of our deficit. Why should we not fight for this? We have to fight for it. It may be distasteful, you may not wanna do it, but we have to do it. We have to do this. I just, you know, for the person who's at home tonight, you know, for, as I say, for the, for the council on aging director who's cutting gas or this out of their budget, for things that they need, they're not big, just, we're, we're making cuts on our end. You're not fighting that on the other end. I just think we have to do it. And so, in that aspect, I'm in favor of sending those.
So I just wanna respond to a couple of things that have been said. First of all, pilot payments, obviously, are not gonna eliminate the need for future override. We're not talking about...
Oh, I agree, I agree.
... generating the revenue where we're gonna avoid future overrides. And all the departments were funded, had their requests this year. We're still working on the FY nineteen budgets, or the FY twenty budgets, so we're not in a position where we have department heads sitting in their offices tonight, cutting budgets or thinking about where they're gonna get their fuel money and their personnel.
I disagree.
So we'll see where next year's budget goes. We always wind up in a, in a situation where we have a large gap that we're closing as we go through the budget cycle. What we're talking about, what we're talking about here is how do we approach this. I'm the only member of this current board that was on the board that adopted the policy, so I am not opposed to pilot payments. What I wanna see is us maximize the way which we're gonna get pilot payments. And I think the way we're gonna do that is by discussing some of the things that have been raised tonight. We have to compare apples to apples. So, Richard, on your example about the BID Needham Hospital, I think it's a question that should be discussed during the meetings that are held in person. Is BID Needham paying taxes already on medical office building? We know, we know, we've been told by the hospital in the past, the downtown hospital is not. They're making a pilot payment, but they're not also paying taxes on medical offices. So that's, those things come out in discussions, and that's why it's important. So, that's, those things come out in discussions, and that's why it's important to have the discussions, rather than sending what I believe, and there may be disagreement, and that's fine, we're not always going to be in agreement. I believe the letters are adversarial, and it's setting us up for a discussion that's beginning with an adversarial letter. So, that's, that's, that's my opinion. I don't think it's the right approach to send them. I would prefer that the discussions take place outside of a public televised meeting by the town administrator and by the chair of the pilot committee.
Just to respond to that, coming from being a department head for 10 years, do not think, Katie, for one minute, that our department heads are not sitting there and that one of the tactics that the town administrator may have to do is to take from this year's current operational budget and make up the deficit for next year. Am I correct, Mr. Denny, or am I wrong?
It may come to that.
It may come to that.
That's not possible to do.
It is possible to do. It's your holdoff, you make your cuts, and that's what you do, you move that money towards...
Well, we're early in the budget process. We're gonna see where we wind up for FY '20, right? We're looking already at a million dollars over the current year's budget. So, the request that departments have put in for additional personnel, and that's gonna have to be revisited as we go through the budget process, that's a separate discussion than pilot. My point was just that pilot is never gonna eliminate the need for override, just never gonna.
I get that, I agree with you.
You're not gonna generate enough money. We don't have enough nonprofit institutions in Milton, such as Boston does, to have a really significant impact on the budget through pilot payments. It's gonna help, but it's not gonna cure our gap.
$900,000 is a lot of money. Even $300,000 is a lot of money, just, I mean, I get, look, I get, but I've sat here and listened, and to be honest with you, I ask you this question, Kate. If Tony had not found out from the town of Needham that BID and this Needham was making that payment, do you think they would have disclosed that to you, Tony? Or had they at all at any point?
That's, I can't answer that question.
Yeah, right. I don't think we should be speculating on that. You know, the people who serve on the boards of these institutions.
I get that, I get that.
They're all local people for the most part, some of them live in nearby communities, but most of them live in Milton. These are people who live in town, some of them are town meeting members, they know the town budget situation. I think we ought to give them the deference, just as we would expect from them, to engage in a good faith discussion with us. I just think we should be sitting down and talking about this, rather than sending a letter with a balance due on a voluntary program. I think we should be approaching it that way. So, that's, we have, obviously, we have different opinions.
I thought that a year ago, I don't anymore.
And if I may, and I, Katie, I don't think you disagree with pilot, the pilot, the policy, as you pointed out, you're just talking about a difference in, you're suggesting a difference of approach. I don't think you're suggesting an approach that is any different than what we've been doing for more than a year and a half. That's been, the reach out has been, let's try, at least it was for the first year, and I'm sure it's continued, let's try for a win-win. Let's get to a win-win here, and let's be accommodating, and let's be courteous, and let's try to do it. And we've been doing that for a year and a half, and that's a long time. And I don't think the approach changes. Again, I don't think the approach changes. I don't think, I don't think an institution is not gonna pay pilot because we send them a letter that says balance due. I would, I have more respect for them than that.
So, why aren't they paying?
Well, my opinion, after talking to them, they do not want to pay.
Except for that.
They do not want to pay.
Except for that.
And, and I, you know, I have an issue with that because we have a policy, and I think we have to act under that policy, and I think part of acting under that policy is telling the institutions what the balance due is, right? And it's not a question of, at least based on their public filings and their financial wherewithal, the good news is, all of these nonprofits are doing great financially. All of their financial information is publicly filed because they're publicly, they're public charities, it's all in the Attorney General's website, and so you can see that they're all doing well, their top lines are doing well, their total assets are doing well, everything is going up for them. And the percentage that we're requesting compared to their revenues is miniscule. It's less than a half of a percent of their revenues. So, it's, it's, we're asking for a small amount, they, the nonprofits, thankfully, are doing great, which is great for all of us. We're asking for a small amount, and I think we should continue to do that and continue the dialogue, and I think this is part of it.
I have a hard time reconciling one figure, which is a Milton Academy endowment of $310 million, and a pilot payment contribution of the town of Milton is zero. I have a real hard time reconciling that figure. I do agree with you, Katie, if we were to send this, and this alone, to these nonprofits, completely out of order and wrong. But I think with a letter, a cover letter, if you will, as a lead-in to this, I think that it's perfectly acceptable. I think that a negotiation or a discussion absent some sort of written communication as a cornerstone isn't the way to go. I can't really speak to Todd Bland and the world of preparatory education, but in the hurly-burly world of healthcare and healthcare finance and BID, I don't think this is anything that Rich Fernandez hasn't seen before. I can also speak as a member of the pilot committee this year in its current iteration that this is an extraordinarily toned-down letter as compared to what some of the pilot committee members would have liked to have seen.
Yeah, well, that's what I was saying.
So, I had to struggle to come up with something that I feel is appropriate, I really do. And the other thing I might add, and I don't know if this logic is flawed, but the cat's already out of the bag. We did it last year. How much, how...
How much more can there be?
Yeah, like, that's, you know, it's, I get that perhaps this caught them a little off guard, and perhaps if I was on the board of Milton Hospital, I might say, what is going on? But this is just the same thing the next year, and I feel that it's somewhat softened. The request hasn't changed, and the calculation is how we, as to how we got to the number, that hasn't changed. But I, I wonder if perhaps it's a bit of an overreaction.
I think we should move to a vote. I think we've discussed it long enough.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the 2010 pilot in the Lewis Max's letters for distribution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Vote.
I said aye.
And again, I apologize for my first nature, but tonight, but this is very important. Okay. Item 14, discussion approval of letter of opposition to the FCC Federal Communications Regarding PEG, the Public Education Government TV Access. This is to approve a letter of opposition to the FCC regarding PEG funding.
Yes. So, this is something that we heard about at the MMA, and it's something that we've heard about from our MPEG partners, which is, the FCC is in the process of making a rule that would allow the...
No, it's red now. You got it. Go ahead, sorry.
The FCC is in the process of making a rule that would allow cable companies to consider in-kind contributions as part of their cable franchise fee. It would also limit local authorities in the way that they could regulate the cable operators, cable operators' use of right-of-way for providing non-cable services. Both of these aspects of the proposed rule would have negative effects for local municipalities like Milton. First, our cable providers, currently Comcast and RCN, provide a franchise fee to the town, which allows largely for the MPEG, the Milton Public Educational Government Access Television to operate. Most of those funds go towards that operation, and if in-kind contributions are considered, and those would be actually the transmission lines, the transmission of the cable or other things that the cable providers provide, if in-kind contributions could be considered part of the franchise fee as opposed to cash, it would likely put MPEG out of business. And in addition, the other aspect of the rule, which limits the local authorities' rights or regulation or rights of way, would limit the opportunity for towns to charge for the cable companies putting things on the poles in Milton, and would also limit the opportunity for the municipality to regulate those for aesthetic purposes. So, this would also have a negative effect on the town. So, along with many municipalities and the MMA, we have prepared a letter in opposition to that rule, the status of the rule, it's gone through, it's second furthest notice to proposed rulemaking. The MMA and many communities have sent in letters. This is a letter that is along the lines of those letters, tailored for Milton, obviously, and is supported certainly by MPEG. They proposed it, I think, when Mike Lynch came in here in December. He referenced it and made a proposal to us, and so we used some of that for the letter. So, that essentially is what, and I've probably talked longer than I need to, but that essentially is what the letter is, it's to oppose this FCC rule.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve a letter of opposition to the FCC regarding PEG funding, and actually, it's more that, and aesthetic design, which are matters.
The rights of way.
The rights of way. Actually, also, and sign a letter of opposition.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We're good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. 15, discussion approval, this is a nomination letter for our wonderful town clerk, Susan Galvin, the clerk of the year. We have a motion to approve, the letter is attached, approve a letter nominating her for clerk of the year. It's attached here.
We actually don't have the letter.
Actually, hold on, no.
It's actually a form, Mr. Chairman.
It is here. It's actually a form, yeah, it's a form.
Delegate me to fill that out if you want.
Would you be happy doing that? Would you do that on behalf?
Yeah, it'd be my pleasure.
Okay, with everyone else?
Yes, thank you.
So, can I have a motion there on that?
I'll move, I'll move to approve a letter of nomination for town clerk of the year for Milton Town Clerk Susan Galvin.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item 16, proposed motions to approve the following one-day liquor licenses for, so I'm gonna read them, someone's gonna make it as a motion, and someone could second it. The Wakefield Estate, 1465 Bushell Road for Saturday, February 23rd, for Blue Hills Winter Soup Fest Community Fundraiser. St. Peter's 10th, 101 Walcott Road for Saturday, February 23rd, 2019, for Family Feud Parish Social. St. Elizabeth's Church, 350 Reed's Day Road for Saturday, March 9th, 2019, for St. Patrick's Day Celebration. Forbes House Museum, 25 Adams Street, Milton, for Friday, May 10th, 2019, while they're way out front, for Bonfest 2, I believe, so a lot of colleagues went to Bonfest 1, and for Saturday, June 1st, 2019, for the Spring Gala, and for Bonfest 3, for Friday, June 3rd, 2019. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
There's one more, Mr. Chairman.
Which one did I miss?
The Milton Club, did you do Milton Club?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, and the last one being the Milton Club, 193 Central Avenue, for a bar mitzvah, February 9th, 2019.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. This is boards and committees, this is the reappointment of the group insurance advisory committee. We have a motion here to appoint the following town employees to this committee, as well as one retired town employee, someone will make that a follow-up motion.
I move to reappoint Assistant Town Administrator, Human Resources Director Paige Appolito, Lieutenant Michael Collins of the Milton Police Superior Officers Association, William H. Murphy, Jr. of the International Association of Firefighters, Philip Driscoll of the Southeastern Public Employees Association, Jason Scherer of the AFL-CIO State Council 93, Local 1395, Margaret Gibbons of the Milton Educators Association, Carrie Devon of the Milton Educators Association, Joseph Fahy of the Milton Police Association, Robert Mallett of the Milton Managers Union, Anne Marie Fagan, a town retiree, Dean Alexander of MEPA, Jan Parr of the Library Association, to serve on the group insurance advisory committee through February 2020.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Good? All those in favor?
Aye.
Boards and committees, reappointments, privacy officer, we have a motion to appoint town administrator, Assistant Town Administrator Paige Appolito as the HR, our HR person as the privacy officer through 2020. Can I have a motion on that?
I'll move to reappoint Assistant Town Administrator, Human Resource Director Paige Appolito as the privacy officer through February 2020.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
19, boards and committees, these are reappointments to the town's traffic commission. We have three town employees, these are the three town employees, I believe, that...
Three residents.
Three residents? Sorry, three residents. I'm getting there, Michael, it's 10 o'clock. These are the three residents that sit on the traffic commission, we have a motion here, if someone could read that, that'd be good.
I'll move to reappoint Marion Driscoll of 40 Margaret Road, Stephen Geister of 50 Canton Avenue, and Lee Toma of 58 Aberdeen Road, to serve on the traffic commission through January 2020.
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
20, boards and committee, reappointments, the telecommunications design review committee. Do we have a motion here to appoint, does Denny represent the planning board, or she, this is a resident?
She's just a resident.
Two residents here. If I could have a motion.
I'll move to reappoint Denise Swenson, Denise Swenson, sorry. I'll move to reappoint Denise Swenson of 65 Green Street and Kurt Fraser of 35 Norman Street to serve in the telecommunications design committee through February 2020.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Dennehy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Town administrators' report, members of the board, thank you. Just a couple of housekeeping things. Special town meeting, February 25th, Milton High School, 7:30. Six articles?
We do it one night.
Looking for more than a quorum that night. As Select Manzulus had mentioned, the traffic mitigation committee, the first public information session, will be held Thursday, February 28th, at the Keys Room in the library from 7:00 to 9:00. Traffic mitigation committee is looking for any and all input about any traffic-related issues in town. So, feel free to attend, or hopefully, we get that Wiki map up as well. Had a wonderful visit by AOL Den, St. Agatha's PAC 5 Cub Scouts here last Tuesday. Lot of very good questions about government, and why we pay taxes, and what we do with taxes, and some very future leaders for sure. But I just want to thank the den leader and everyone for coming in that afternoon. It was a breath of fresh air. So, thank you to AOL, AOL Den, St. Agatha's PAC 5, for their Cub Scout visit to town hall. Two other things, the FY '19 stormwater bills were mailed today. Same price per thousand square feet as last year, $1.88, and the tier system is broken down the same way, so the single-family residents should see the same bill that they saw last year. If there's any difference in that, it has to do with the impervious area that was calculated. But they're asked to call Alan Bishop in the Public Works Office if they have a question with their stormwater bill. And I just want to thank the health agent, Erin Egan, for her two years of work with the town. Erin is moving on, we want to wish her good luck in her future endeavors, and just thank her for her wonderful work these past two years for the town of Milton.
She's a loss, she's a good kid.
Big, big loss for the town. Best of luck to Erin and her family.
Is that it?
That's it.
I've talked enough for tonight.
So have I.
This is Collins.
Um, no. I have no report.
The only thing I'd like to say is, I wanted to congratulate Therese Desmond on her 31 years of service to the town of Milton as cemetery superintendent, and to wish her well. I know that she's not going too far, and that she continues to serve the town as a member of the animal shelter committee, so it's good to have her, and I wish her all the best. Comes from a great family.
I will miss her. I remember her first day. First day, I'd believe it was that long ago. Anything else? We're good. Future agenda items, so we're going to have an update soon for the capital improvement planning committee on enterprise funds. We want to bring in Anax shortly to have an update. Do you think they're ready to come in? Do you think Andy's...
Maybe in a couple of months.
We check up?
We have a meeting in February after that, maybe.
We're just, as Mike would say, touching the wall.
Yeah.
Update on the pavement inventory with the graphic representation of our current roadways, and that can be from Chase, and that's a very good idea. Tom Hurley would love to be here for that. What else? Discussion approval of the Comcast contract, do we close? We...
The INET contract is with Comcast, and the license is in process. I, we asked the consultant today what he thought the timing would be, and we didn't hear back, so I'm hopeful that we can get it done. You know, I would say at this point, we're in February, I would say, if we can, if we can get it... if we can get it done by early March, then I think that would be, that would be, we'd be in a good position. But the consultant is working on it, so hopefully that will, that will move forward.
Citizen speak response?
One other thing.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, MPEG, I'm, I think I touched.
Oh, no. You were going to mention the MPEG.
No.
Oh, okay.
But I, but go ahead.
Oh, no. Well, I, I guess I, I just wondered about those design guidelines for public rights-of-way. We talked about the letter, and I didn't know if we would be putting on, as a future agenda item, trying to do something about putting design guidelines in place, or?
You want to add that, Jen? I think she's already got it, I can see that.
Okay.
And moving over there.
And also. On that note, I forwarded to the town administrator the materials that we got at the municipal law session at the MMA, so that has a section on it that talks a little bit about it.
About that subject there?
About the aesthetic guidelines, yeah. And I think I asked if we'd check in with town council on that, because at the time, we were told there were no guidelines, but presumably other communities are starting to think about this, and should be hopefully coming up with guidelines that we can copy.
So this is aesthetic guidelines, what, for private, for creating private ways, or, no, so?
Wireless boxes.
Wireless boxes, oh, yeah, we did, that's right, okay, yeah, I get that.
Right, and I, and I, I mean, I don't want to have a discussion here, because it wasn't on the.
Agenda?
Yeah, so.
It's okay, we're just adding a future agenda item, so that's okay.
Right, I, I just didn't know, as you said, there aren't guidelines, and I just didn't know if there was a way to work.
We don't have anyone to plagiarize off of right now, so.
Well, I think we should check with town council, see what some of their other communities are doing.
And, let's see, oh, I just wanted us to keep the short-term rentals in our, so that we are as proactive as we can be on that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
And then, one more, we should get an update in the next few meetings on the Chikatobet- Randolph intersection.
I think it'll be close. I mean, Donnie Daley's done, he's been, he's got us to where we're at, so.
Yeah, I reached out to Donnie Daley, who's the Masthead representative. Very responsive, very, very good ally to the town, and Rep. Driscoll to follow up on that intersection.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, you just reminded me.
Going once, going twice.
Sorry.
You're out of water.
The trolley, and I, I didn't know, I, you know, Rep. Cullinan's been working on that.
You went, you went as well, you both went, right?
Were you able to go?
Yes.
Oh, because that, I, I would be interested to know, to hear what happened, or, and what we can do, I mean, as a town.
So is it fair, I could go back to a members' report, is it fair, under a members' report, to give a report on what, what happened there?
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think that's, it's, it's on the line, I think.
Yeah, I do, I do too.
Why don't I do it at the next meeting?
Yeah, exactly, I think, I think at the next meeting, right.
So just to that point, I don't know if you're on Twitter, you definitely want to follow Rep. Cullinan on Twitter, he tweets about this a lot, and there's a Facebook